I open this session of the Upstate County Commission and call it order. We will begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, and equal to all, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, gentlemen. Good morning. It is a beautiful day today, and farmers are out cutting their hay and making their hay, except one farmer, and he's doing his civic responsibility today. He said later today, "We'll be in the fields."
He said, "I'll be waiting for the dude before we..."
So we have Jackie to read last week's, uh, my last meeting.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The county commissioner of Upstate County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at the Courthouse Amictive Thursday, July 16, 2015, at 9:00 a.m. J.C. Rafferty called the meeting to order. There were present J.C. Rafferty Commissioner, Troy Brady Commissioner, Terry Cutright Commissioner, Carrie Wallace County Administrator, Tattletale Perry Assistant County Administrator, and Jacqueline and Blocker Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. All motions passed unanimously and thus otherwise stated. After reading of the minutes on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the regular meeting minutes of July 9, 2015 as submitted. Carrie Wallace provided a review of the request for approval of a blanket order to remove all existing resignation letters from the law order books. Ms. Wallace advised that due to HIPAA regulations, the information contained in the letters may violate existing laws, so for the sake of conformity, the letters will be maintained only in personnel files. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved the request. After review and discussion of the county deposit toward bond of first community bank Bluefield, Virginia, to Upstate County Commission, Sheriff of Upstate County, effective July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2016, on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved and accepted all of the terms in full, including but not limited to the period, the sum, and the banks option to secure either bond or letter of credit and accept the bond as presented. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved and authorized the president to sign correspondence to Emergency Site Protection LLC, confirming the official recognition of ESP LLC as an Upstate County Emergency Services Provider as discussed at the July 9, 2015 meeting of the Upstate County Commission. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved and authorized the president to sign correspondence to Oval Brown, Upstate County resident, requesting compliance with property cleanup request. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the reappointment of Al Martin to the Tannerton Public Service District Board of Drafters as recommended by John V. McGrew, Jr., Chairman. Mr. Tenney's term will expire on July 31, 2021. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved the reappointment of Dana Wentz as board member of the Upstate County Youth Camp Board. This month's term will expire on May 31, 2022. Carrie Wallace reviewed the grandfathered slash non-grant fathered status concerning the provisions of the Affordable Care Act as related to the existing health plan. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved and authorized the president to sign the document and acknowledges that Upstate County does not fall under a grandfathered status. J.C. Rafferty reviewed the voluntary information items. Number one, correspondence from Ron Hooton, District Southern Manager of the West Virginia Department of Transportation, Division of Highways, responding to correspondence from Tattletale Perry, Assistant County Administrator, regarding the request for installation of a traffic control light at the intersection of U.S. Route 33 and Easton Mill Road in Upstate County. The request will be forwarded to the Traffic Engineering Division for evaluation. Two, Upstate County 911 Communications Center reports, Jan. 2015, as listed. Agendas and/or notice of meetings as listed. Four meeting minutes as listed. Five meetings as listed. Six appointments needed or upcoming as listed. Representatives of the Tobacco Prevention Coalition and Upstate County Family Resource Network appeared before the commission and provided an update slash status report concerning clear air, clean air concerns on county-owned property. Dr. Joseph Reed, Board of Health Representative, reviewed data and statistics to support their request for all properties owned and operated by Upstate County Commission to become tobacco-free campuses. Currently, county-owned and operated properties do not, uh, do operate under the Clean Indoor Regulations. Rick Edwards spoke as a private citizen and expressed concerns that non-smokers are having their rights slash privileges taken away. Mr. Edwards expressed that most smokers are respectful of non-smokers. Tim Higgins and Joyce Harris Becker expressed their concerns about the effects of secondhand smoke and smokers disrespecting non-smokers. After discussion, Terry Cutright made a motion not to approve the request to make county-owned campuses outdoors smoke-free. Troy Brady seconded the motion. Commissioners expressed concerns about infringing on citizens' personal choices and where to draw the lines. Dr. Reed advised that information concerning quit smoking classes can be obtained through the Board of Health. Relay for Life representatives appeared before the commission, and Jewel Fisher read the Relay for Life of Upstate County Proclamation. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved and authorized the commission to sign the proclamation, which does its, designates July 2015 as Relay for Life Month in Upstate County. The Eighteenth Annual Relay for Life Event will be held at the McHalen Upstate Middle School on July 31. Taban Swires, Lieutenant for Bennett and Seth Lake, Representatives of the North Central Swim Association Championship Meet, appeared before the commission and provided an overview of the event, which took place at the Upstate County Recreation Park Pool on July 10 and 11. Ms. Swires expressed appreciation for the use of the pool for the event and reported on the successes of the two-day meet. The event was attended by 228 swimmers, with over 20 records broken for the event overall. Upstate County's team, Splashes, broke eight records. Greg Harrison Maintenance Team were commended for their hard work in getting the pool in the best shape it has been in years. Mr. Blake reported that there were no documented instrument, uh, incidents, and made a PowerPoint presentation to the commissioners showing highlights of the event. Roy Collins, Upstate County resident, expressed appreciation to the commission on their stance on the prevailing wage matter, which has been a topic of discussion at several recent commission meetings. Mr. Collins also voiced concerns about the requirement for a permit to hunt on curried property. Mr. Collins stated that no permit is required to hunt on 4:00 a.m. property. Carrie Wallace advised that is not the commission's intention to make it harder for hunters, but ensuring the requirements dictate the necessity for permits for the protection of the county. Ms. Wallace advised that she will follow up concerning forage property, as they should also require hunting permits. The commission approved all invoices for payment. The commission approved all vacation orders. The commission approved the following settlements as listed. The commission approved the following exonerations and/or refunds as listed. The commission reassessed at 12:00 p.m. The commission attended the meeting of the Upstate County Department Supervisors. The commission attended the meeting of the Upstate County Policy Board. The commission reconvened at 2:45 p.m. With no further business, on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission meeting adjourned at 3:00 p.m.
Thank you, Jackie. Appreciate it. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes as read?
I do have one correction. That was an error on the agenda. Dana Wentz's term should expire on May 31 of 2021, instead of 2022.
Okay, with the noted correction, are there any additional corrections to the minutes as noted, as read? If not, and with the correction made that Ms. Perry indicated, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Still move?
Second. All in favor say aye. All the same sign. Motion carries. We have a 9:15 appointment, which will be a public meeting for consolidation of precincts. That's voting precincts. Review and approval of proposed consolidation of precincts 18A and 18L, 28A and 20L, 27A and 27L, 37A and 37L, 39A and 39A and L, 44A and 44L, and 47A and 47L, to review and approval of proposed closure of precinct 13 and combining, not homing, I think that's combining, with precinct 14. Then at 9:30, we have John E. Nottingham, Public Engineer, Vice President, MGE LLC. Discussion regarding geotechnical investigation to be conducted at Upstate County 911 Communications Center. And then at 10 o'clock a.m., we have Debbie Shapiro with the West Virginia Strawberry Festival Board of Directors, requesting additional funding for the 2016 strawberry festival. Until another five minutes, we'll then go to the items for discussion approval. First item for approval or discussion is the recommendation for an extension of time to settle estate of Betty Marie Rysmizel.
Rysmizel.
Rysmizel. I know that. Otherwise, I'd sit and play dead. Is there a motion to approve the extension on that time for the settlement of the estate?
Um, extend the time.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. All the same sign. Motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from Senator Jay Brown, Senior Justice Program Specialist, Division of Justice and Community Services, regarding recent violence against women act grant award. Review and signature of grant contract between the Division of Justice and Community Services and the Upstate County Commission Resolution, certification forms, and supplemental special conditions. So is there approval for the president of the commission to execute the, bring the order to that particular grant?
Still move?
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from Ed Bear, requesting consideration to fill the vacancy on the safe sites and structures on the board. Two-year unexpired term set to expire June 30, 2016. Is there a motion to approve Mr. Bear's appointment to that board?
Still move?
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from John C. Buck Edwards, requesting consideration to fill the two-year term vacancy on the McCann National Parks Recreation Board effective July 1, 2015. The sheriff's term will not be set to expire June 30, 2017. Is there a motion to appoint Mr. Edwards to that board?
Still move?
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from Greg D. Kreiser, requesting to be reappointed to serve on the Upstate County Youth Camp Board for another six-year term effective June 1, 2015. Mr. Kreiser's new term will expire May 31, 2021. Is there a motion to approve that appointment?
Still move?
Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. Next, we have approval of full-time deputy clerk job posting application must be received by the close of business on August 10, 2015. Approval for that posting to be made. Is there a second?
Same.
All in favor say aye. All the same sign. Little bit of drama there, buddy. Motion carries. I think, well now, not 9:15, we have scheduled Debbie Thackerlifong to appear before the commission relative to the consolidation or combining District Precinct 13 and 14 and the consolidation of other districts. Does she like to appear in a statement? I think you've appeared at least one other time relative to this issue and give an explanation as to the reasoning behind it, in order to extend your remarks, if you wish to.
Uh, I think, right. We're doing as, trying to combine precincts 18A, 18L, 28, 20A and L, 27A and L, 37A and L, 39A and L, 44A and L, and 47A and L. Combine those, put them back into one precinct, and then combine, and then actually closing precinct 13 and combining it with 14.
So 18 will longer be A or L, will just be strictly 18. And those others would follow the same way. 13 would be totally disconnected or disposed of and be combined into 14.
That is correct.
Okay. Any additional information that, like, this isn't save money for the county by having fewer poll workers.
That is correct. Save money by, save taxpayer money. It allows us to get fewer poll workers there, and the more our poll workers, the more we...
Right.
I would last to election, we can have someone work out in the office.
Sort of like jury, I get people to serve on a jury sometimes.
Correct.
Okay, gentlemen, have any questions? Debbie?
Debbie?
Yes.
What would voters have to do? Do you just send a new card?
We will send, we're trying to send H11 a new card, so the new card will matter. So their precinct basically isn't going to change except for what's the combining, except at the middle school, we are maybe a couple of them into the gym, out of classrooms, which will make it much nicer. They're much happier with that because the classrooms are so small and they had to rearrange everything and so.
So other than a few cosmetic changes like that within the facility, there really is no change in the term, in the locations of where the, the voting will take place?
Other than the, at the, at the middle school there, that's quite the...
Right, but it's still the middle school.
Still the middle school, yes. And precinct 13 will be done away with, put it into 14, and it will be a, what they call the gymnasium or, that one will be closed.
Thank you.
And there'll be signs posted on those doors that morning.
There'll be people there to assist them if they need a guidance.
Yes, but, well, there will be the poll workers there, but no, that'll know.
Thank you.
Okay?
Okay, is there a motion to approve the consolidation?
I got a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Several years ago, 37A and L, several years ago when it's 37, and, but they changed it to A and L because there were too many voters.
That is correct.
That's what I, now, we're going back to what it was originally. Now, I'm going to have a bunch of voters, they'll be lined up, but the polls trying to get in, you know, where it was, where it was, that's the reason, was split, was what I'm getting at.
Right, and it was really, it was really split too because of the law, of the law there. The laws then changed where we could increase those precincts, now the number of people in the precincts. So that's why, that's why we're changing. And what they'll do, depending on each election, how we handle it, like, we have a presidential election coming up next in 2016. That's always our biggest election. So you'll have, we'll have two sets of poll workers. So we're going to increase the number of poll workers in those precincts on a large election year.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
So hopefully that, I'm not going to make you know, it's not going to hold up the line, put your name on it, it's there at the beginning when you go in to register at the clerk's table, and then, so hopefully it's not going to...
Okay. Can I ask you a question, Deb? Any other questions?
No, but Debbie, I just want to say thanks for trying to save the taxpayer dollars here, if you all may. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. Having, having listened to Ms. Thackerlifong, who, this request, is there a motion to approve the consolidation and the closure of precinct 13?
I'm going to approve.
I'll say.
All in favor say aye. All the same sign. Motion carries. Our next meeting is in 10 minutes, so we'll continue with our discussion of action approval items. We have correspondence from Krista Kelly announcing her resignation from the 26th Judicial Circuit Community Corrections Program effective July 31, 2015. Is there a motion to approve that resignation?
I'm going to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. It corresponds with Stephen Linger, Director of Upstate County Communications, regarding Krista J. Allman's resignation effective immediately. Is there a recommendation to accept that resignation? Is there a motion to accept that resignation?
Still move?
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from Steve Linger, Director of Upstate County Communications, requesting that Christina M. Pickens be changed from a part-time telecommunicator to a full-time communicator, telecommunicator, effective immediately. Is there a motion to approve that, that recommendation?
I'm going to approve their recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. We have a few more minutes yet, so I can go down there for the information items. We have the Upstate County Sheriff's for national statement prepared ending June 15. We have a cat report for June 15, a dog report for March 15 dated June 15 through June 30, 2015. We have the dog report for June 2015. We have agendas and no notices of meetings. We have meeting minutes. We have meetings to be held by various boards that the commission members or representatives serve on. We have appointments needed or upcoming. And I'm thankful that we had a number of individuals step forward to request appointment to some of these board vacancies. It's good to have civic-minded individuals. Now, our next regular meeting of the Upstate County Commission will be next Thursday, and there also will be a joint meeting, I believe, that night with the city at the Courthouse Chambers here. So every fifth Tuesday, we try to get together with the city to discuss matters of mutual interest. As a personal note, I've been requested to announce that the Indian Volunteer Fire Department will be hosting a open house Saturday beginning at, I believe, 11 o'clock. Food will be served. There'll be all sorts of activities, a public tour of the building. It's a brand-new addition onto the building, and very proud of what they've done, and it is the 60th anniversary of that fire department, one of the oldest in the county.
J.C., the mayor wanted to announce the Brooks Hill Fair.
Okay, why don't you, Debbie?
The Brooks Hill Fair is this weekend. It's Friday evening and Saturday evening. I think it starts at 6 o'clock Friday evening, like everybody coming out. Have a good time.
And also a point I'd advise at the August 6th, 26th, 2015 meeting, which is two weeks from today, the meeting for the Upstate County Commission has been canceled, but there will be a special meeting on August 6th, 2015 at 1:00 p.m. And we also, commissioners will receive training that day along with, I believe, other employees on the new telephone system that is being incorporated in the courthouse. Much improved system over what the current system that we have operating. These three commissioners here, they're going to be teaching old dogs new tricks because they're amazing what telephones can do today versus what they did back in, maybe. We still have a few minutes, so, yes, Mr. Mayor.
May I?
Certainly.
Um, Devin, I have taken a special interest lately in our very own Lewis County Animal Control Facility. And I want to, first of all, thank the support that you give and Lewis County gives to that facility. It's a much, much needed, um, issue and the support that you give. I know the city of McCann is a minimal amount of support. I'll find a change in that, but I think, and I don't know, I'm just asking, have any of you guys visited the facility any time lately? We have got a great group of volunteers out there. We have a great director who takes her job very seriously and hates having to do some of the things that she has to do as far as protecting the animals' safety and getting them out in the public. But I want to stress to the citizens of McCann and everyone that has visited as well, there are certain times of the year that these issues become even more prevalent, spring, summer, that we have to deal with, and unfortunately, it is overwhelmed out there. And to see what I had to see yesterday as far as the consequences of irresponsibility of our citizens as far as their pets are concerned, please, folks, stay or neuter your pets. Do be responsible, stay. There are other issues with people that end up getting a dog that find out, or a hell of pets, and then find out that they don't necessarily want that pet, couldn't afford that pet. A lot of different circumstances surrounding the reasons why they have these pets, but they end up bringing them back or dropping them off in a drop box for these poor animals. And I know there's a lot more advertising on TV you see about pets and dogs and cats. I want to throw out there, and I will be at, at McCann and City Hall as well, trying to encourage and educate folks on the serious issues around our pets. It is very sad to see what happened to some of these animals. A lot of people don't realize that if you bring in an animal that's sick, unfortunately, when they put it into a cage, they don't know it's sick, and then other pets catch it, and the other animals are contained, they're catching it. So really, I just want to throw that out there to PSA, the city of McCann will be looking at this and addressing it as well. I just want to say that how much we appreciate the support that you give and Lewis County gives. I think maybe at some point, we can all work together to enhance or improve what we have out there. I would really love us to see, and this is going to be a little controversial, a no-kill shelter. But to do so, we have to have more funding, and we have to have more cooperation between the governmental bodies and volunteers to come out and work there. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you so much for what you do. Please, citizens, be responsible with your pets. Do what you need to do, but please, just do not drop them off. We appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I echo your comments regarding our volunteers. We have a good group of volunteers, very, anyone that's ever listened to them or had contact with them, and they've appeared before the commission on numerous occasions, knows that they are motivated by true love for these animals. And because of that, one of the positive trends we see is more animals being rescued by even out-of-state groups, so that, that is a positive thing as well. But I echo, it always boils down, many ills of society, unfortunately, are, you know, always boiled down to the responsibility of individuals, taking responsibility, not just in the animal pet area, but also across the board in other areas that affect our community. Just taking personal responsibility seems to be out of hope today, and I, but I think there are more and more people that are, are really starting to recognize that it's the individual that needs to take responsibility for their actions or inactions. Okay, it's almost 9:30. We have two more minutes, if anyone wishes to go to drink coffee or tea or water. Okay, it is now 9:30. We have Mr. John E. Nottingham, Public Engineer, Vice President, MGE LLC, to discuss geotechnical investigation to be conducted at Upstate County 911 Communications Center. Mr. Nottingham?
Well, I haven't conducted anything yet. I understand provided proposal, but I was just at the site to look at it for the first time. There's a small slide on the cut slope above the 911 center that I happened to run into a gentleman out there at the center this morning. He told me that they made efforts to repair that once it passed, and...
Mr. Farrell, I presume, the, oh, the director?
Yes, yes. And apparently shortly after that effort, it slipped again. What was done, based on what he told me, was to install some drains above the slide area, and then they just kind of regraded the area. They didn't really do any significant work to the slip itself. My proposal is to drill some test borings to determine what the extent of the soil, how deep it is, what type of soil it is, and based on that information, I'll prepare a report providing detailed recommendations on how to fix it properly.
And you had sent some communication to the commission with your proposed costs and relative to your professional work and all that?
Yes, I submitted a proposal that outlines the scope of work and planning to do along with the estimated cost to accomplish that.
And you coordinated that with Greg Harris, our facilities manager?
Yes.
Any gentleman have any additional questions?
No.
We appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Looking forward to seeing what you find.
We do need to address that issue because it has potential for damage of, of record.
I work on a lot of landslides and that was one of the more minor ones I have to deal with. So I'm sure we can.
For us, it's major.
Yeah, I would say. But I don't think we're the, we can get it fixed.
Thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Nottingham, well, we'll talk about that. Greg, did you wish to make any comments?
No, I think we've got everything said that needs to be said, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a good day. Our next appointment is at 10 o'clock, so we'll continue, I guess, paying our bills and then handle that.
I believe I just need a motion to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Acceptance of the proposal.
Appreciate that. Is there a motion to approve the geotechnical investigation to be conducted by Mr. Nottingham's firm?
Still moved?
Second?
Second?
All in favor say aye. All the same sign, motion carries. Thank you again. It is now 10 o'clock. We have our final appointment of the day. We have Debbie Shapiro, Sponsorship Chair of the West Virginia Strawberry Festival Board, and a discussion regarding funds for the 2016 strawberry festival, which will be the 75th annual festival, I believe. For Debbie, if you'd like to take the podium.
My gracious.
You can.
So formal.
You thought this was going to be informal. This is like, this is like the Congress or something.
Well, good morning, Mr. Caver. Nice to have you. Got a cup of coffee off you, by the way.
Got some, I have some coffee and tea and water.
Anyway, well, thank you, Josh, for giving me time to speak with you guys today. But it is, it is the 75th strawberry festival, and we're going to call it our Diamond Jubilee because that is what it is. And as we know, with anything, when you try to make it bigger and you try to make it better, it takes a few more dollars. And, you know, also this year is the 200th anniversary of the city of Buchanan. It's our bicentennial here. It's the 125th anniversary of Wesleyan College. So we have a lot going on right now in this community and a lot of things that are really going to draw attention to what we're going to be doing during the strawberry festival. Because the best way to showcase all of these things is during that time when we have the most people. And we have been spending, even though last year's festival went on and it was a great festival, minus the weather, as we all know, and our poor parade got decimated by the weather. We appreciate you all participating this year.
We were raining out too, though.
Yeah, you were. So even with that, we were already planning during that time for our 75th. I mean, that has been in the works for well over a year. We want to make this the biggest and the best festival that the strawberry has ever seen. And we have a lot, we have a committee outside of our strawberry festival board that is the 75th committee that are putting together plans. It's my job, they asked me to come on this year to try to get sponsorships, to bring money to the festival. You guys lined item, I do believe, when I spoke to Ms. Wallace, at $2,000. What I'm asking today is simply, as you know, what is for an additional $3,000? If possible, we would use that money towards the activities that we plan for that time. You know, is there going to, can I give you one item today that we're going to use that $3,000 for? Probably not. Definitely not. But we will tell you that you will know that your money is at work during that week to what we have planned. We have really increased the amount of children activities that we're going to do. We're planning a separate children's parade, hopefully, if it gets off the ground this year and things like that. So basically, I'm here to ask for $3,000.
Your efforts are commendable, and we really, I believe we will support you. However, at this time, it's hard for us to commit because we're in the middle of our fiscal year.
Right.
We normally prepare budget items around, start around March, April. Actually started thinking about it earlier than that, but in terms of getting it together with knowing what our budget will be. So I think what typically do in a case like this is to hold their decision in the pants. Well, we have heard you. We do know what the anticipated needs are. We do know what the festivities will be, and there will be something, you know, very special next year. So those things we are, we do recognize. But until probably next spring, we'll then have a better idea of how much money we have and what we can afford. That's not to be, I don't want to be negative or give you a parent's statement negative. That's how we find ourselves typically. It's hard for us to commit funding nine months down the road, eight months down the road, until we know, you know, what our fiscal status will be. I believe, believe anyone I say that we've heard your message and that we know that 75th Diamond Jubilee. Can I make a recommendation that we call it Strawberry Diamonds or something like that?
Yeah, I think.
Maybe that's a theme that's going to be.
They have voted on the game. There was like a little judge, we already had a run there.
Is that, is that public, is that public yet at this time? Or what is the theme?
2016 West Virginia Strawberry Festival Diamond Jubilee.
Oh.
Yes.
You figure out one little down here?
Yeah. We actually have lapel pins that are coming out, and we have decals that I already have, so.
This is a big one, okay?
It is.
And I know that many, many festivals like started, you know, festive intentions, and to get to 75 years is something that I think is probably somewhat unique.
And I think the state of West Virginia has lost approximately about 16 festivals this year. So due to funding. And so, you know, and because times to talk, we understand that, and, you know, but you've been very lost and lucky that our festival is continued on, so. And we want to keep that.
Well, 16 just this year?
Yeah, I think, yes, this year, yeah. So within the state. Of course, you know, there is 90 some festivals in the state, but that's a large number.
That is a substantial.
Financial issues, so. But we all think we're the biggest in the state, so.
Well, I tell you, it is one that I know a lot of people come in to visit for homecoming. They'll use that occasion when their families stack together. Last year, the first time in memory, I think, the three commissioners agreed. But sorry, I wish you were still here. He left earlier. Jerry Kimball, his vehicle got kind of contested a little bit. We weren't able to, then it came down. But we'll look forward to next year.
Perfect. And I appreciate your all's time.
And I thank you very much for presenting your message to us. And I know that we are supportive of your efforts. But we have to revisit that probably in the spring sometime.
Right. Do you want us to come back, or will Ms. Wallace?
We do that, or we normally set aside during our negotiations with the different elected officials. We can, we'll basically know what our income is when the assessor gets the information to us.
Well, I think we'll just entrust you guys and then wait for Ms. Wallace to get back in touch with us. Would it be?
You can't trust us, you can't.
I know that you guys.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. You're on the weekend. Thank you. A cup of coffee. I prefer tea, I saw.
I can be freezing in a lobby and you turn along some of this nice warm coffee. Well, I'd have one of that.
We all take care, y'all. Thank you for your presentation. I think that's the last, yes, that is the last presentation, so we'll finish paying our bills.